Okay, we're called to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, July 7th, 2025. At this time, I'd like to ask that everyone please rise for the brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we open this meeting, we are ever thankful for the nice weather and the good attendance we had at our 75th Annual Fourth of July Fireworks Program in Batavia. We had a minor grass fire that delayed the grand finale a couple of minutes, but other than that, it went off without much problem. And we are ever thankful to the fireworks committee for all the good efforts they did in bringing this special holiday to Batavia. Tonight, as always, we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon all those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And then we just ask that a special blessing be placed on the backs of each and one of these men and women as they go about their vital missions. Tonight also, we want to ask for a special blessing on those who in our community who are suffering in some form of illness or disarray of situation in their life, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them. Tonight, we ask for direction and understanding and vision by the members of the city council as we go about the vital issues of approving the agenda before us. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Who'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance?
Alderman Ray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Barazza, absent. Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Malone?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Lowman?
Here.
Peeper?
Here.
Farenbach?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Vogel singer, absent. Twelve present, two absent, Your Honor.
We have the necessary quorum to conduct business. All right. Item four is a reminder to anyone who's going to address us tonight, if you come forward and use the podium, please use the microphone because this is being televised on TV, and if you don't use that microphone, anybody watching it or watching the replay of it will not hear what you have to say. So please remember to do that. Moving to item five, items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Do we have anything? I don't think we do. All right, then moving to item number six, the consent agenda. Alderman Beck.
Yes, Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the May 2025 building reports and the Committee of the Whole Minutes for June 10th, 2025, and for approval, the July 3rd, 2025 payroll in the amount of $1,112,236.14, the accounts payable check register in the amount of $5,925,639.56, ordinance 2025-36, declaring surplus property transformers, resolution 2025-89-R, authorizing execution of a contract with electric conduit construction, resolution 2025-84-R, authorizing execution of a contract with M3 electrical contracting for EV charging station installation, ordinance 2025-35, amending Title 8, Chapter 1 of City Code related to renewable generation facilities, resolution 2025-91-R, amending customer self-generation net billing policy, and ordinance 2025-37, conditional use permit to establish a tattoo parlor at 127 State Street. Your Honor, I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Question and second for the approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Beck?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Vogel singer?
Unsure of what we're voting on, so...
Consent agenda.
Thank you.
Oh, aye, yes. Lancy?
Aye.
Thirteen, yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. Let the record reflect that Alderman Vogel singer has arrived, and Alderman Barazza was here, and she stepped out, but I think she's still in the rooms, in the building someplace. All right, moving then to item number seven, which is matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak to us tonight? I guess not. Okay, we go to item number eight, which is presentation by the Batavia United Way, updates and upcoming events.
Thank you so much for allowing me to come in and share with you some information about Batavia United Way. My name is Kathy Evangelista. I am a resident of Batavia. I'm also the executive director of Batavia United Way. And I have a couple of pieces of information for you. Just in case you are not familiar with Batavia United Way, we've been serving Batavia residents here for over 95 years. Our mission is to inspire the community to form strong partnerships to creatively address the ever-changing needs of Batavians in four specific areas: by securing pathways to better health care, expanding youth opportunities, providing financial security, and building a more resilient community. So everything we do, our volunteer work, our programs that we fund, our programs that we do, everything ladders up to these four areas. And we are very pleased to announce that our Board of Directors has voted to award over, not over, exactly, $140,000 in community impact grants for our upcoming '25-'26 fiscal year. These grants, all the funds that we are awarding, is going specifically to our Batavia residents. So these are all our community partners, our community impact partners, who are serving Batavia residents, places like Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry and Clothes Closet, Salvation Army. So we're providing programming for food pantries. Some of the other programs that we fund are things like prescription medication support for senior citizens who are low-income through Batavia RSVP, suicide prevention services, free medical and dental services through Tri-City Health Partnership, and the list goes on and on. But we are really pleased to be able to award $140,000 to these community impact partners. And if you're interested in learning more about those programs that we're supporting, you can visit our website, that's right on that slide, bataviaunitedway.org/allocations-grants. But in addition to providing support, financial support for all of these programs, we also have our own programs that we run. So one of the things, one of the other things that we do is we look at the needs of our community and where there are gaps. We look to fill those gaps with programs that meet our community needs. So some of the programs, we have a whole bunch, and I'm not going to go through them all, but I'm just going to highlight three for you tonight: two in our youth opportunities area, expanding youth opportunities, and one in our financial security area. So our first one that I'd like to talk about very briefly is our Success by Six preschool scholarships. These are providing our at-risk little ones who can't afford to go to preschool with the funds to be able to go to preschool. In the '24-'25 school year that we just completed in May, we provided 12 children with these preschool scholarships, and we're on track to provide about that many, maybe up to 14, for the upcoming school year. We did actually provide or award 15 scholarships, but because of transportation issues, which is another discussion for another day, we, they weren't able to actually secure those spots in preschools. And we have partnerships. What makes this possible is the partnerships that we have with our preschools: Batavia Covenant Preschool, New Horizons, which is the preschool through the Batavia Park District, let's see here, the Batavia Public Schools Early Childhood Center, and the Parents' Day Out through Batavia Methodist Church. Those are our partners that we, that we work with for these preschool scholarships. And we get to hear all about how these kids are growing so very much. So it's very heartwarming to know that they started not being able to identify shapes or colors or letters or engage with peers or, you know, really follow directions from a teacher, and by the end of the school year, they're advocating for themselves. They're initiating interactions and play and able to identify some of those colors, shapes, numbers, and letters. So we're really pleased with the preschool scholarships. The next program that I would like to talk with you about very briefly is Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, and I'm pretty sure I've mentioned this when I've spoken to you before. This is a program that we just celebrated our two-year anniversary. The Dolly Parton Imagination Library provides free books to children, all children, from birth through their fifth birthday in Batavia. Those books are mailed to their home each month at no cost to the families. That's something that we and our preschool, not preschool, sorry, and our funding partners pick up. So that program is made possible through a partnership with the Dollywood Foundation and the State of Illinois, who covers part of our invoice, so that we can provide these books. We've served 930 children in Batavia in that two years, and we continue to serve close to that. Some of our kiddos have graduated, and we've mailed over 13,500 books for our kids in that time. So it is a wonderful program, and we're hoping to see increased literacy rates. That's really the goal of what that program's supposed to do. And we're super thankful for the supporters of this that sponsor a month or so of the Dolly Parton books, things, people or organizations like the Batavia Foundation for Educational Excellence, or Friends of the Batavia Public Library, the Batavia Mothers Club, my book club, my husband's work. So lots of different, lots of different organizations that are supporting this. And Dolly's birthday's coming up in January. She's turning 80, and so stay tuned. We are going to have some sort of birthday celebration for her. Not sure what it's going to be yet, we're still in the planning stages, so that'll be super fun. And the last program of ours that I'd really like to talk about is our Community Assistance Fund. This is our emergency assistance fund for Batavia residents that provides that emergency one-time assistance in times of need. So it's not, don't build us into your budget, it's for emergencies. And in the two years that we've been providing this program, we've provided over $37,000 in support to keep our Batavia residents in their homes, dry, warm, with their power on. And this is a collaborative effort with the Salvation Army, Batavia Township, St. Vincent de Paul, Chapel Street Church, Chip in Batavia, all of our community helpers who I love, hold close, near, and dear to my heart, that we're able to really provide wonderful programming and support for our Batavia residents. One of the things that you have right in front of you is an ALICE report. ALICE is, refers to, it's an acronym for the Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed Population. This is the information that we take to help us determine how to fund programs and how to support our residents. So in Batavia, we currently have 5% of our population that falls below that federal line of poverty. But that doesn't tell the whole story because we have a lot of individuals here in Batavia and throughout Kane County that fall between that federal line of poverty where they don't qualify for any sort of benefits, but they don't hit the survival budget, which is what it takes to actually survive here in Batavia, to survive here in Kane County. So what you have in front of you is the ALICE in Kane County snapshot. And on the backside, if you look at that, it has a comparison amongst the different cities in Kane County, kind of looking at how many people, what percentage of each city's population falls under that ALICE threshold. Here in Batavia, we're at 26% of the population of Batavia who are one flat tire away from really falling into a sad situation, which is always surprising when I see these numbers. The ALICE report comes out every May, and so we get updated numbers every May. So there's a lot of really interesting, good information that we use to help us determine how we're going to fund programs and how we're going to build new programs to provide support. But this is also really important and great information for you all as city council when you make determinations and decisions on what Batavia is going to look like, because this gives you a really great economic snapshot of what's going on. So there is an ALICE in Illinois report, but it's 30 pages, so I did not print it for you. It's on our website. Please feel free to take a look at that, and I am happy to talk with anyone about additional information. But I have an entire presentation about ALICE, and you don't want to hear it, so I'm going to move on. So to do all of these things, we have to do fun things, fun events, and sponsorships and things like that, and that's what actually funds all the work that we do. We have two big events coming up in the next couple of months. Our 2025 Community Dinner Table event is happening on Sunday, September 7th, at 4:00 on River Street, on North River Street. It is a fantastically fun event where we set up a table, 200 neighbors come together to share in food and fellowship and beverage and all the fun things. And this year, we have a Mediterranean theme with a strolling guitarist, so I hope to see you there. There is, you can get tickets right now. We just opened up ticket sales last week, so it hasn't even been open a week, and about a third of our tickets are already gone. So if you're interested in coming, please, you can follow that QR code or visit our website there. It's going to be a great time. Tickets are $65, and that covers food and drink and the strolling guitarist entertainment. And then finally, the last thing I have for you is our Bat Race is coming up in October, on October 25th. This is a super fun event, 5K, 10K, kids' fun run, that really brings a lot of people into our community. We have over 700 runners that register for this race that come out, some are in costume, some are not, and that's okay. And it's a lot of fun and really kicks off the day, which is followed immediately after by Batavia Main Street's Bat Fest. So it's a great day, it's a great time to come out and really kind of experience all the fun that Batavia's all about. So again, the registration information is right there. Follow us, visit our website, and that's all I have for you. Do you have any questions for me?
You have any questions? Well, I just want to say outstanding job by the organization. You really are making Batavia shine, and you've touched the parts of the town that really need to be kind of polished up. And so I really appreciate all your good efforts because you're making it happen for a lot of people that probably wouldn't if, if United Way wasn't there doing their thing, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. All right. Next, we'll go to, we have a appointment of, reappointment of Mike Willowett, Andrew Dykman, and Andrea Zellis to the Batavia Environmental Commission for three-year terms. Would somebody confirm, make a motion to confirm my appointment?
So moved.
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Beck?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Vogel singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Thirteen, fourteen, yes, no, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. All right, then that's followed by another reappointment of Laura Newman to the Fire Pension Board for a one-year term. Somebody make that into motion for me?
It's a three-year term.
What?
It says a three-year term.
Oh, a three, I'm sure, a three-year term.
So moved.
Again.
Motion and second for the reappointment of Laura Newman for a three-year term to the Fire Pension Board. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Malay?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Vogel singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Fourteen, yes, no, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to 11 in the Chamber of Commerce report, and we have the vice president here. I believe you're the vice president, correct?
Sure. I was, I'm the past president, so maybe that's the VP.
You're always there with me cutting the ribbon, standing in the...
Yes, I do get to help with that. That is a fun part. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jamie Sam. Whatever you want to call me at the Batavia Chamber of Commerce, I'll take it. Thanks for having us here tonight. We appreciate always getting to present and share updates with you guys. Margaret is on a much-needed vacation, so she asked me to step in and come speak tonight. She has a whole bunch of stuff for me to tell. I'll try to keep it quick and then present a guest. But first and foremost, you guys voted recently on the official city flag, so thank you. And Margaret said sales are going really strong. There was another uptick, so we released it, what, has it been two years since we released it? And its sales slowed, but now that we've been able to republizize it, we're seeing them show up in people's yards and at buildings again, so that's really cool. Flags are available on the Chamber website, so you can order those there, and then you can come down to the Chamber office to pick those up. They have both the garden-size and then the big three-by-five flags, and those are made here in Batavia at Flag Source. So kind of double whammy. You support the Chamber, you support the city, you support Batavia business. We have had several new members join the Batavia Chamber of Commerce recently. I believe at our last meeting, we were at like 517 in members, which is awesome. We've stayed steady over 500 for a while. Margaret didn't put this in here, but when I first joined the Chamber Board, the focus prior to was hitting 500, and we kind of shifted that and really focused on retaining our members and making sure that there was a value from the Chamber to those businesses within our community. And we, by doing that, magically hit that 500 number, no longer our goal, but we did it, and then we've kept over that. And some of these businesses are Batavia-based, some of them are outside of Batavia, which shows the value of the Chamber that we hear of and the strength of our community here that people from other communities want to join our Chamber. So some of those new members are Ignite Medical Resort Batavia, Pulte Homes, Jeffrey Cesario Insurance Agency, KNY Installation, Inc., Persona Tri-Cities, Turner Media Group, All State Champion Insurance, and Denise McBride. So they're all new members of the Chamber. We just hosted our annual golf outing at Bliss Creek on June 23rd. It was super successful. Of course, it was super hot. It's been hot, and it's never going to stop being hot, but we, we did a great job. The city was a great sponsor for us, and we actually had a lot of city staff join us as well, lots of representation, so we thank you guys all for your support. That's a big fundraiser for the Chamber, and even with lots of golf outings and lots of different organizations, the Chamber still does a really good job with our golf outing. Couple upcoming events, in case you're interested. Coffee and Commerce is a fun one, so that's Wednesday, July 9th, this Wednesday at 8:00 AM. We're hosting it at 63rd Street Apothecary right in downtown Batavia, 8:00 AM till 9:00 AM. It's a nice one to like hit right as you're headed to work. Always a nice mix. You don't have to register to show up. It's free for anyone, Chamber members or not. So if you want to kind of mix and mingle with some different business owners, that's a good one to come to. I talked to Margaret before this, and I was like, give me some ribbon cuttings, and then I want to entice all the council members to try to come and join us at the ribbon cuttings because they're kind of my favorite. But unfortunately, we don't have any ribbon cuttings on the calendar right now. We tried really hard, and sometimes business owners get a little apprehensive about hosting ribbon cutting because they know they're going to be in the spotlight. But just, I know, I think you guys all received the Chamber emails, I'm sure you see all of them, but there will be some coming up, and I cannot say enough how valuable it is to the Chamber businesses when they see we have great representation from city staff. There's always a couple aldermen that come and some other community members, and they really feel that support. They always say how great it feels when they open here in Batavia. If they've opened in other communities, it's not the same representation and reception that they get. So if you have an opportunity to come to a ribbon cutting in the future, I really, really would strongly recommend it. I know sometimes they're in the middle of the workday and inconvenient, but if you can make it, it's a great way to show your support and meet the new businesses, and then they kind of get to see your face and know who they can talk to. We do have another networking event coming up on July 16th at 4:30, networking at Brother Chimp Brewing, so just outside of our boundaries. That's another free one. You don't have to register for that one either, so just in case, again, you don't have to, I think by proxy, you guys are all Chamber members anyway because the city's a Chamber member, but that's a good one to come to, meet some of our businesses as well. The rest of our events are listed on the website. I'm not going to read through all of them because you won't remember what I say, because I won't remember them. And then one of our big promotions that we decided to do throughout the year is called Chamber Eats. So we're trying to support our local restaurants throughout the entire year. So each month, a restaurant is featured, a Chamber member restaurant is featured, and the Chamber staff promotes them on social media, in our email newsletter, all of that, and then they schedule a once-a-month, what do we call it, out-to-lunch, I believe, with the Chamber. So this month, we're featuring Chicken Salad Chick, and I will be introducing Kim in a moment, but that's for the month of July. So we encourage everyone to go and dine there if you haven't been there before, if it's been a minute since you've been there, since you've been there, or if you frequent it, just frequent it again. But we will be going and doing our out-to-lunch on Thursday, July 17th at noon. Again, another no registration, just show up whenever you can, and we all just kind of have lunch, just casual, fun. And then to anyone who dines there throughout the month of July, you can enter to win a $25 Chamber Buck gift certificate, as well as a $25 Chicken Salad Chick gift certificate that will be pulled at the end of the month, once we get all of those entries and see all of the people that chose to support the restaurants. Recently, we did Sidecar Supper Club, and Melissa like called Margaret at the Chamber and just said how thankful she was and how great it was because she saw faces she hadn't seen before or people she hadn't seen in a long time, because it's just that reminder of all the great places we have in Batavia to dine and enjoy. So without further ado, I want to, I want to introduce Kim Seaman. She is the owner and operator of Chicken Salad Chick, which has been in operation in Batavia since January 2023. It is a locally-owned restaurant, offering amazing chicken salads and sides and a warm atmosphere. It is a favorite of Bulldog Plumbing. You'll see our cars in the drive-thru quite often. All of our staff really like it. So anyway, Kim, if you want to come on up. Hello. Excuse me. Eight-year-olds are more my thing than adults. So hi, I'm Kim Seaman. I'm the owner of Chicken Salad Chick here in Batavia on 220 North Randall Road in front of Menards. That's like part of my saying, Menards, everybody knows where you're at. Before opening this restaurant, I taught 20 years at Louise White. Most of it was in second grade, and so when this opportunity came up, it kind of felt like home, even though I don't live here. I've been part of the community for over 20 years. I've taught Tucker. I've worked with Tony, so it felt like the right thing to do, starting here, also knowing how welcoming Batavia is to small businesses and women-own small businesses. Chicken Salad Chick was founded in 2008 by Stacy Brown, who was a stay-at-home mom of four kids. She started making chicken salad out of her home, you know, not as part of ALICE, but to make, you know, a little extra, and started taking it down to neighbors and friends. That's why our logo has, she was a blonde and carrying a basket. She carried a basket full of chicken salad down to people, and they would taste it, they'd give her feedback, she'd try new-dip recipes, and after a while, people were putting in orders, and then somebody called the health department. And back in, back in the early 2000s, pre-COVID, you couldn't cook anything out of your house and sell it. So she decided to open up her own storefront in 2008 in Auburn, Alabama. So we are Southern draw, that's why when you walk in, you've got more of that Southern feel, which is that homey feel we want you to have when you come in. And she then franchised it. So there's over 300 locations as of right now in 22 states. We are still the only one in the northern, in the suburbs of Chicago. There are five in Illinois, but Central and Southern Illinois. There are more coming. There's been quite a few, a lot of interest, more coming. It just takes a while to start a business anywhere, but start a business in Illinois, I think it makes it a little harder. So part of our mission is to spread joy and rich lives and serve others. So for, here in Batavia, we work with Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry, Chip In, United Way, the Chamber of Commerce, Lazarus House.
the sporting events, you do see some of our logo stuff, because we like to support. Our location is open Monday through Saturday from 10:30 AM to 8:00 PM. All of our, one of our biggest selling points is everything is made fresh. We make all of our chicken salad from scratch in our kitchen. We make all of our sides fresh. So when you come in, if you came in today, you got fresh chicken salad that we made this morning. That's good for the rest of the week. We also serve 13 different flavors. 12 are always the same, and then we rotate one. They are all named after people in Stacy's life, so everybody has a story. Come in and you want to know, there's different pictures in there that talk about it. Staff can talk about it, but it's one of the things that drew us to the brand was just the community that it brings to you. We have a lot of people that come in, and they stay for hours, because they've met a friend, they've met a book club, and it's just a place that everybody can meet, have really great food, I think, for themselves. If you haven't had it, I highly suggest coming in, because we like to sample all of our food. Anything on our menu, if you'd like a sample of it. I've sat down with trays of every flavor inside with people so that they can taste it, test it, see what they like, because we want you to pick what your favorite is. My favorite is Cranberry Kelly, which is dried cranberries and slivered almonds. And we also make our own egg salad, so that is really good, too. We offer online ordering, delivery. We have a drive-thru, and then catering. We love to cater. We can cater any size event. We deliver, we set up, and you'll know it was freshly made that day. We also run out our solarium. So if you're having a meeting or hosting something, you can run out our solarium. And we also are closed on Sundays, but we have hosted events on Sundays. We're willing to work with you with whatever you would like. We also, in supporting what I used to do, have a kids' night once a month. Kids are either eat-for-free or a discounted meal, and there's always an activity, a craft, something to do. My favorite is Dr. Seuss. We do Dr. Seuss's birthday, so we have one of our employees dress up as Cat in the Hat, and every child that comes in gets to pick a book and bookmark and color a bookmark. We do that every year. And it also goes into the other piece that we've just added, is my passion when I taught was children reading, getting children to read. And one of my proudest pieces of that was the classroom library that I had. So my family, for Mother's Day, made me a free library, and we've put it into the restaurant, and it's a kid-free library. So all of, not all, because I have still boxes and boxes at home, but lots of the books that I had in my classroom, I'm slowly putting in there for kids to come and take. And at the end of the day, Chicken Salad Chick isn't just about the food. It's about the connection, the joy, and the community. And thank you for letting me be here, and thank you for letting me be part of the community. And is there any questions?
I just have a comment. Chicken Salad Chick is a go-to for my family. We go there quite a bit. But I do know that about a month ago, you sold out of everything, so congratulations on that. It's probably a huge feat.
Yes, our Mother's Day promotion, which we do every year, and it's a corporate promotion, is buy one large quick chick, which are to-go containers, and get one free. And yes, we closed at 4:30, because we ran out of chicken, which upset some people, but we make it fresh, so I can't just, we steam it. It comes in raw. We steam chicken. We do it all, so we can't just make it when it comes out.
So congratulations on that. That's huge.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I've been to the restaurant, and I used to sub in your classroom sometimes. I can attest to the size of the library that you had. I love what you're doing. Thanks for the origin story. I didn't know that, how it was created. That's really cool. Thanks for all you're doing for the community.
And I'll just comment, too, that when you left teaching in Batavia, it was a loss for the community. But knowing that you're still in the community, and we appreciate that, and couldn't be happier for the success that you're having.
We're also opening a location in Glen Ellen, hopefully later this fall. And then I still have a third one that I've signed on for that will open somewhere in the Fox Valley. Not sure yet. So, thank you.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We're not done praising you yet.
My mother will tell you, I'm a chicken salad aficionado, and I had the golf outing. They were phenomenal, so I will be taking my family there. I haven't yet, but I will. Thank you.
So I just want to say, before you get stepped down, I serve as the chairman of the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Plantings Council of Mayors in downtown, and that's all 284, because that's where they have to come to us with looking for federal and state money for transportation and land planning. That's what we do. And I now have had five of my fellow mayors in there ask me, can, if I come out to Batavia, can you take me to Chick-fil-A? So I've had five in there. I have one in waiting now that's from way down in the south suburbs, and it's a gal, and she really has heard a lot about you. So I'm thinking you or your corporate office must be getting some people knocking on the door, because there's other cities kind of scouting you out in Batavia. And every one of them that's been in there that I'm aware of walks out of there with very positive reactions to what you're doing and would like to get you into their town. So I think you've got a good thing going here, and it's going to be a growing operation. So thank you for choosing Batavia, and let us be the place where your star shines very brightly, because there's a lot of towns showing up here wanting to go there. So, thank you.
I just had a question. I love your place, too. But for that library that you're starting, do you accept donations if, you know, we want to come in and bring a book?
Yeah, so when you walk, you've got to walk into the store. I kept it inside. So it's in there, and it's lower, so it's at the kid level. And yeah, feel free to
I have a lot of kid books. I could bring some there. Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, now we'll let you off the, thank you for coming. Do we have anybody? What my agenda says here? We got through the chamber. Number 12, Resolution 2025-085-R, authorizing execution of professional services agreement with Mewch Group for a study relating to the TIF number seven. Laura?
Yes, all of the next, the three items, 12, 13, and 14, are related. One is to assign, accept an agency agreement or approve that agency agreement with BEI to act as agent for the purchase of two properties which are located at 102 and 108 South Batavia Avenue. And that is the impetus for then a study relating to whether the area in the region of that property would qualify to set up a TIF, the purpose of which would be to pursue development of that whole block, because then if the city ends up owning 102 and 108 South Batavia Avenue, the remainder of the block is owned by BEI, and it offers the city of Batavia the very unique opportunity to collaborate on the development of an entire city block so close to our downtown. And so we are recommending approval of the study, of the agency agreement, and also accepting the assignment of the real estate contracts for 102 South and 108 South Batavia Avenue.
Somebody care to make that in the form of a motion?
Sure, but I just a comment first that
Have at it.
I fully support this. I think the ending of the TIF III with time left on it provides income for some of the other taxing bodies, but it's not enough time for us to get a development project in that like this would provide. So I think this is a good move, and I fully support that.
Thank you.
No one else has commented. I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution 25088-R, agency agreement approved. Actually, that's not the one. The resolution. Yes, 2025-090-R, accepting the assignment. Nope, that's not it.
Number 12.
I got the right to the agenda. Number 12.
Second. We'll get there.
2025-85-R.
25-085-R, authorizing a professional services agreement for the study of a TIF district. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Malay?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
14, yes, no, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. Moving to item 13 on our agenda, which is Resolution 2025-088-R, agency agreement approval. Who's got this one? Laura?
Yes, all the same things that I said. This agency agreement allows us to purchase those properties and get the assignments of those purchase and sale agreements.
I'll move that we adopt Resolution 2025-88-R.
Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
14, yes, no, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. And then moving to item 14, which is Resolution 2025-090-R, accepting the assignment of the real estate contract interest agreement. Laura?
The same. This would just be ultimately, as stated in the agency agreement, then to formally accept assignment of those two agreements, which currently are in their due diligence period.
I move we approve Resolution 2025-090-R, accepting the assignment of real estate contract interest agreement.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Malay?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
14, yes, no, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. All right, moving then to item 15, Resolution 2025-093-R, authorizing purchase of a public restrooms.
Yes, this is Urban Blue, the company that we've been talking about for the public restroom facility that will be located on North River Street, where the current tin shop is currently located. At our last committee, the whole meeting, we looked at a very nice seating plaza that we think will be a tremendous complement to the area. Also, you know, afford the opportunity for additional seating, which we also know is at a premium, especially during our farmer's market. We have very carefully vetted this company, Urban Blue, and have looked at other cities where these facilities have been installed, and they live up to what they claim in terms of being a very clean, modern facility, that it cleans after each use. In addition, deep cleans every hour. It lets us know when it needs additional materials to be added to it. It is fully programmable in terms of, you know, the service hours that might be incorporated in there, and it is very hardened against vandalism as well, which was an important thing, because, you know, this comes at a cost. But it is, it is coming in at the budget that we expected. We're bringing this directly to City Council, because it does have a 16-week lead time. And so we would like, as it seems that everyone is very much in favor in moving forward with this project, have the opportunity to purchase it as soon as possible, get our order in, in order to have it installed before the end of the year.
Lohman?
Were you able to find out if it was possible to put that safety button on it?
I'm sorry, did we follow up on that? And if it's not able to be from the factory, I believe it's something that we ourselves could install aftermarket.
Was it What? Go ahead. Oh, was this the single or double unit?
It's a double unit.
Oh, good.
I think that there's some wiggle room with the budget, the estimated cost, and then what we're allowing for, and the possibility of a water fountain.
Yes.
I would speak strongly in support of that as an option.
Yes, a bottle filler on the unit. Max, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I'm expecting it to be closer than the 330 range. I just wanted to give ourselves some room in case, you know, we were talking about air conditioning and some other features that might change the pricing, so I need you to get this on the agenda. But it'll be firmly within that budget.
Other questions?
Alderman Malone?
Yeah, you know, first off, I spent far too much time watching the videos of these things. They're like really
They draw you in.
Really impressive. They do draw you in. But one thing I was left wondering, will they be utilized in winter months as well? Does it allow for year-round?
Yes.
Questions? We got a second? We do not.
Moved.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
14, yes, no, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. All right, moving right along to 16, the Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I want to promote a program that I think is very timely and very important to families in our community. It's called Preparedness Police and Popsicles Mini Camp for Kids. The Batavia Police Department and the Kane County Emergency Management are hosting a free hands-on emergency and disaster preparedness class for kids. It's for children entering grades three to five, and it will be held on Wednesday, July 16, from 9:30 AM to 1:30 PM at Batavia City Hall. And children will learn the difference between emergencies, disasters, and hazards, and how to respond with confidence. Topics include basic first aid, calling 911, building a go-bag for your family and for your pets, weather safety, gun safety, and family communication plans. The course is designed to be age-appropriate, engaging, and empowering, but not scary. Kids will receive a go-bag to take home, enjoy popsicles, and they bring their own lunch, but they'll have lunch with the Batavia police officers and also Comfort Dog River. The date also includes a tour of emergency vehicles. So there are still spaces available if you would like to register for this event. And I think it's very timely, given the microburst that we had here in the city of Batavia, and families needed to take some emergency actions and recognize hazards, but also just, you know, things that we're seeing across the country of more and more emergencies that people need to deal with. And sometimes the message coming from the children in the families is the strongest message of all for families to be prepared. Also, wanted to make people aware of some of the projects that are going on in the city. One of those being, for a long time, we've heard that it's kind of dark out here in the South Plaza at night. Like to thank the electric division for the installation of the streetlight there. It really has helped to lighten up that area. Also, with the electric division completed the Norcross electrical upgrade, which included undergrounding a lot of lines that had previously been overhead, which will make them less susceptible to weather events, falling trees, and wildlife that sometimes, you know, are the impetus behind power outages that we have. So greatly improving the resiliency in that area. Also, the annual streets program is anticipated to get underway starting July 14. We'll start with the concrete and sidewalk work first. One project that you may notice that's rather prominent there is on Route 31 between Wilson and Houston Street. Those pavers, which have really become crumbly over the years, are planned to be replaced really become crumbly over the years, are planned to be replaced with concrete. Also, an update on the water department's lead service line replacements concluded on Wilson Street, and now we're going to be moving to South River Street and North Washington. So I've noticed that the flaggers are doing a really great job of getting traffic through these areas, and they're being very careful about it, very much appreciated. The food pantry remodel has a pre-construction meeting that actually occurred last week, and so that work should be beginning soon. And we are on target to be finishing, just as the lease is concluding in their current location over on Redant. That's all the updates I have, unless anybody has any questions for me. Yes, Alderman Malone?
Yes, we're sort of in the middle of the Green Home Energy Audit application process. Do we have an idea of how many applicants we've received, or if we've gotten?
So far, we've received 75 applications. So it has been, I think, a very popular program.
It's closer to 100 now.
Closer to 100 now. That was Friday news.
Laura, can you give us a brief update on the installation of the cameras?
Yes, nearing completion, and we hope to have, in particular, those that are in the area of the Pegbon Center operational for Windmill City Festival, which the large gatherings was one of the primary reasons that we implemented more cameras in that area.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Thank you very much.
All right, we have other business from the council? All right, very quickly, for the mayor's report, I will just share with you that I get a lot of calls recently about several subjects. And interestingly, one of them is people are telling me that they're trying to watch the Weather Channel, and the Weather Channel isn't like it used to be. It's half of a screen, and half of it's some story about somebody doing something in bad weather, and you don't get as much reporting on the Weather Channel. And I have yet to find out exactly what's happened to the Weather Channel, but there's, it has quite a fan club in Batavia, I'll tell you that. People watch it. And so that one's kind of out there for the world to kind of wonder about as to what's going to happen with the Weather Channel. But I didn't realize what a fan club it had until rather recently, when we had the storm event several weeks back, and it kind of hit both sides of the river, south of Wilson Street. And we didn't get any warning from anybody about it. It just, and the Weather Bureau later told us that they just, all of a sudden, it got, that storm got to Batavia, and it just grew up and spit itself right down on the ground and went to town on us. And so they were apologetic that they didn't give us much warning, because there wasn't anything that they saw that was indicating it was going to happen. So I've sat in on a couple of meetings in Chicago recently, where there's been quite a bit of conversation about, you know, what is really happening with climate change. And I've had some conversations with some of the folks from the University of Chicago. And they are definitely of the opinion that we are really starting to see some significant climate change in the United States. And the next five to 10 years, it's going to really unveil itself, and you're going to be able to see what climate change really is like. And there's going to be some significant areas that are going to experience significant change in how the world treats them from a weather perspective. Those of us around the Great Lakes, so we are told, may be some of the ones that don't have as much change as some of the rest, because we have this great generator of wind all the time coming off the lakes, and that has a tendency to kind of blow some of the bad stuff away from us a little bit. But there are some other places. I guess California could really see some significant changes. I guess they started getting snow last year of some magnitude, and we didn't get as much snow. So they're looking at that as, kind of wondering, is this going to continue on? But the weather is something that really is probably going to be in our forefront here very quickly, and something that as citizens of Batavia, we all should probably try to keep an eye on, because it is going to have an impact on each and every one of us. So I just wanted to use that as my message for the meeting, that there is weather conversations going on about what's really happening with the weather. And I don't know if the Weather Bureau is really prepared to say yet what is happening, but there is some change rolling into effect. Okay, entertaining motion for adjournment?
Oh, moved.
Second.
Motion in second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.